It is 7:00 PM, so we will call the meeting to order. If you'll please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we will go to Item B1 Superintendent's Report. Dr. Henson.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. I'm pleased to announce that in 2015, Shawnee Mission School District students received 275 Advanced Placement Scholar Awards, indicating their college-level achievement. Colleges and universities will be informed about each AP scholar's success. And so, we have to say 15 because we're kind of in-between school years right now, and so, the most recent school year, if you will. Earlier this year, we celebrated Indian Wood's science teacher Vanessa Hannan's opportunity to earn a spot at Space Camp in Alabama. Hannan is back and has reported the experience was incredible. Space Camp offered her the opportunity to experience space simulators, complete activities that she can bring back to the classroom. Hannan's spot at Space Camp was secured by Representative Barbara Boyer and made possible through support from Ray and Suzie Macalister through the Shawnee Mission Education Foundation. Jessica Oriozko and Pooja Podilea, two Shawnee Mission West students, brought home a silver award from the National Family Career and Community Leaders of America Conference. They were honored for their work on a service project which provided a safe trick-or-treat opportunity for the community at Shawnee Mission West. Looks like they're having a great time, doesn't it? They're in the photo. Project Lead the Way Launch, an engineering program created for elementary students, will be taught in more Shawnee Mission schools this year. Students at Blue Jacket Flint, Broken Arrow, Krista McAuliffe and Tomahawk will join Oak Park Carpenter, Santa Fe Trail and Comanche in providing the program to their students. Teachers recently, like this summer, gathered to train to teach the STEM-focused program. Speaking of elementary schools, we are excited to welcome the remaining 23 elementary schools onboard with the Digital Learning Initiative. This will complete our final phase of deployment and our goal to provide a digital learning device to each student in the Shawnee Mission School District. This year, middle school students will learn with the help of MacBook Air laptops instead of iPads, a decision made to honor feedback, we heard from our instructors. Each elementary school will also receive a set of keyboards for use with the iPads. So, we haven't talked about it for a few months, but a pretty significant technology initiative rollout. And so, in the last 15 months or so, we will have rolled out over 30,000 devices, technology devices, to our students and to our staff as well. And so, the remaining 23 elementary schools, that's going to happen in a few short weeks. Speaking of a few short weeks, school is right around the corner, and so, we're excited for school to start. This is the very busy time of the year where we're making preparation for school to start. As you know, we've eliminated fees for the parents of our kindergarten students, also eliminated textbook fees at the elementary level, so certainly looking forward to receiving an update in relation to elementary student enrollment over the next several weeks. I do want to inform you that we've been having conversation with the City of Lenexa in relation to the location of the Aquatic Center for the Shawnee Mission School District. So, as you will recall, a couple of months ago, the city manager and mayor from the City of Lenexa came to present here at the school board meeting, and so, our staff has been meeting with staff from the City of Lenexa. So, we're working intently and making great progress in relation to inking an agreement with the City of Lenexa to locate our Aquatic Center. If you want to call it Nanatorium, that's fine as well. They're in the City of Lenexa in relation to the Lenexa City Center in that proximity. So, we don't have an agreement in writing yet, but again, we're making great progress. My intent, if we dot our i's and cross our t's, is for the Aquatic Center Nanatorium to be located there at the Lenexa Community Center. We think it's a great location. City of Lenexa has stepped up to the plate. They are actually donating the property to the Shawnee Mission School District if we can make this deal complete. And so, if we have a contract or memorandum of understanding, certainly we'll bring that back to you for approval. But our conversation solely right now in relation to the Aquatic Center is with the City of Lenexa in relation to that location. So, if you have concern about that, let me know. But other than that, it's full steam ahead for us in relation to that location. We're excited about the possibility of that partnership. And again, we've made great stride with the city manager and others with Lenexa in placing the Aquatic Center there. We're very excited about this great opportunity for the Shawnee Mission School District. In relation to construction, we have a little construction going on. We'd like to have more construction going on. We never want to complain, but it's been a wet summer. And so, but Dr. Southwick will share some information in relation to construction.
We're officially in the mean season for school construction as we draw close to the start of school. We've tried to provide an update every month to the board. I spent a little bit of time and Mr. Robinson spent some time with not only our architects but contractors and their superintendents over the last week or so to gauge where we are. Happy to report, but sad to report that we're behind schedule in some of the areas. Some of that has to do with weather, some of it has to do with being able to secure steel and doors that we need for projects. That's an industry-wide problem that seems to be out there. But the good news is, is that particularly around our safe and secure entries, that the work, although it might be a little bit behind, we believe that we'll be open and ready for the first day. Some of that might require that we have some temporary doors in place, but we can assure you, our goal was to leave those buildings in a safer condition as we start the year than they were at the end of the year. So, we feel comfortable about that. Again, most sites will have substantial completion before school starts. If we look at our kitchen remodels at Deemer, Westwood and Corinth, Deemer and Westwood are on track to be open the first day of school. As you know, the logistics around a new kitchen, we're working very closely with Nancy, and maybe over the first few days, there will be some adjustments that will have to be made, but we feel very comfortable. We're working on a little bit more of a significant plan at Corinth because they are behind schedule. It could be possible that we're transporting a few meals in there for a while, but those kitchens, once they're open, will be marvelous additions to those buildings. As you know, we've had a lot of conversation over the last, during the spring and in the summer, about what it took for us to move Briarwood students to Broadmoor and our Crestview students to Arrowhead. I'm glad to announce that the work there is nearing its completion and where it will be in the cleaning phase. Reminder that we have allowed for instructors to be compensated for two days extra, plus the days that they have to get their classroom ready. And as I talked to John today, Martels, he said that he's already had contacts and the people have already asked to be in the building. So, we feel comfortable, we're going to be on track to deliver those programs and start school on time without a problem. I did want to pass on, and this came from John, Chris Lash and Dr. Peach, that the O&M staff have been absolutely marvelous to work with over the summer to get the work done that needed to be done. They've been spot-on in their work. They've come in and done it in a gentleman way, and they are, they were very happy about that. And they're actually hosting some pizza lunches for those, just to show their appreciation. That happens during that first week in August. Rose Hill, Deemer and East have HVAC projects that are going on. Those are going to be on track, as well as most of our roof projects, although we've had some weather delays. We don't think that there's anything with those roofs that will cause us a problem as we move forward to the start of school. Synthetic turf installation, North Stadium, I was there today. They're dropping rubber in the field. If you get a chance to go by there, it's absolutely gorgeous right now. It's all green and fresh. And I think we have band camp Monday night at the field at North. So, the practice field is a different situation. We're about 30 days behind on that field and also the field at East, and it's strictly because of weather. As you remember, we did have some problems with some of our permits at North, but it comes to find out that North is probably a little bit ahead of East right now because of some issues that we run into there. Not major, that we can't take care of, but North might be finished before East, which was a little bit of a surprise for us. But we're working with not only the contractors and the architects, but also with the athletic directors and coaches to make sure that we've got plans in place for our programs to start and to be able to start on time. We're in the final design stages for Crestview, Briarwood and Trailwood, and that's coming along pretty well. We've had our community meetings, as you know, before school was out, we had our meetings with principals and staff. We did a little bit of design work at Trailwood. We had our community meeting the other night. I think there was about 150 people there, great showing. We were able to roll out the design of that building, and I think it was well-received. Those plans have been taken to the different entities, Merriam and Prairie Village and Overland Park, and we're working through the process. We still believe, early this fall, we'll be breaking grounds on those projects. Benninghoven, we met today on a general design with the principal of the building, and we will continue to work on that design. And we're in the early stages of the program there and how it will lay on the site. As you know, we were not able to find a piece of land that we could move that school to, so we're going to go through the logistics to build that building on-site, and we've started that process. We think we'll be about three months behind with Benninghoven in terms of the construction pieces of that, rather than opening after Christmas, potentially in the early spring or maybe in the fall of the year. But we think that we'll come up with a great design on-site and work with our contractor and our architects to have not only great design, but to be able to deliver those buildings. As you know, the bids for Crestview and Briarwood are out there for us to start the demo. All we lack there is to pick up the permits and we'll start to have a little dust in our neighborhoods. We promised that we're going to be good neighbors, and we've worked with J.E. Dunn around that to make sure that we clean up our mess and we don't leave our streets muddy, and again, we're going to try to be good neighbors. That leaves us with our Center for Academic Achievement, which quite honestly continues to be a little bit of a struggle, but I do want to report through that process that Jack Messer and I have agreed to be point-on. We actually negotiated this week that the answers to some questions would be received in their office today, and Jack assured me if that happened, that his staff would be in the office at 8:00 in the morning to review them, to be able to get our permit to do grading, site work, and also hopefully footings and foundations. So, we've had to separate that out, but we feel like that that's movement. We want to get moving as quickly as we possibly can. It affects us with respect to this building and how we move forward, but also, more importantly, being ready for our students with our signature programs in the fall when they come back. We do have some projects that we are in some preliminary, very preliminary, design on. They're beginning to look at what it's going to take to bring South Stadium, not only do the renovation, but make sure that we have it, from a security standpoint, safer than what it is right now, and also looking at the ADA accessibility, which is a major problem. Architect told me today, he's never seen a stadium that was in, that was any less accessible than what we have at South. So, we knew that, we're addressing that, and we believe that some of that work could start as early as next summer. We've already started to look at what our next rounds of synthetic turf projects will be as we move into next year. As you know, we have somewhere, depending on how things shake out, it could be 11 to 15 of those, if we can work our budgets and take advantage of economy of scale, to be able to deliver not only the high schools, but our middle schools for their sports program. And the last thing is, as Dr. Henson talked about, with respect to the Aquatic Center, as we move forward with Lenexa, they are on a fast track to break ground. We're not going to be ready that quick, but there will be an opportunity for architects to work with theirs to plan for when the connections of those buildings are made. All of the design work and all of that has been made. So, it is, it's exciting. I tell people all the time that if you're patient, what will be delivered in the end is something that we can all be proud of, and we just, we have to keep people's nose to the grindstone a little bit as we move closer to school. Obviously, those projects are our top priority.
Thank you, Dr. Southwick. I might mention to you a couple of other things. We are dealing with a landslide issue at Ray Marsh Elementary School, actually on the consent agenda tonight, it's number 11. So, it was an emergency. We have a statute that allows me to approve some contracts on an emergency basis you have to ratify. We think a landslide issue is kind of an emergency issue impacting a building, and so that's number 11. And so, we'll let bids on that as early as tomorrow, maybe on Monday. That could impact a couple of classrooms at the start of the school year, and so, we don't know the final detail on that yet, but we are dealing with a landslide issue at Ray Marsh Elementary School. Also, you'll notice on your consent agenda tonight is the approval to sell this building, and so, we will make it available for sale, and so, we'll put that information out. One of the issues for us is in relation to the timing. When will the Center for Academic Achievement be finished so we can vacate the building? But it's actually approving to go ahead and move forward to sell this building. And also, I want to let you know, we're having, I'm going to say numerous conversations with developers and their legal counsel in relation to TIFs. Dr. Southwick and I have another meeting with a potential TIF project tomorrow, and so, over the next several months, you'll be hearing quite a bit about TIF projects, information we'll bring to you that are going on within the boundaries of the Shawnee Mission School District. So, stay tuned in that regard. Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn.
All right. We will move on to C1, a special presentation by Ms. Lynda Roser from the Education Foundation.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Good evening to the board. If you want to come down with us, we'll do this without being awkward about it. Business and industry partnerships connect our students' academics and real-world applications to provide an authentic learning experience to prepare students for their futures. One of the roles of the foundation is to help make those connections to create lasting partnerships. Kansas Gas Service and their parent corporation, Foundations, have partnered consistently with us since 1995. Over the last 20 years, they have generously provided $35,000 to benefit student learning. Tonight, I am very pleased to present their most recent investment of $20,000, pardon me, $2,000 to purchase additional industry-standard equipment for the civil engineering and architecture class in the Project Lead the Way signature program. Civil engineering students learn important aspects of building and site design and development, which they probably could learn around the district this year. Things like surveying and soil testing. They apply math, science and standard engineering practices to design both residential and commercial projects using the same industry-leading technology and software in practice today. As civil engineering grows in its second year in Shawnee Mission, Kansas Gas joins Terricon to ensure that Shawnee Mission's learning environment for future engineers features the most current equipment used in the field today. Kansas Gas Service investment in additional equipment increases the opportunity for civil engineering students to experience and practice meaningful, hands-on learning. Margaret Steele, Community Relations Manager of Kansas Gas Service, sends her greetings. She says, "Kansas Gas Service is pleased to support innovative programs and classroom experiences in schools within our operating areas. This grant from the One Gas Public School Foundation Program is going toward a very worthwhile program, preparing students to work in our industry and other engineering fields. The foundation values the partnership with Kansas Gas Service, and we are proud to help prepare their future workforce."
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Is this mine? Thank you. Thank you.
Take it to the bank.
On to D1, open forum. Nobody? Okay, so we move on. Okay, E1, which is the approval of the meeting minutes of the regular meeting, June 22nd?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Neiber. Thank you, Mrs. Steele.
Just pick one.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries 7-0. Now for the approval of the minutes of the organizational meeting of July 13th, 2015?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Merrick. Thank you, Mrs. Zila. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries 7-0. Now on to F1, which is the adoption of the agenda.
Move for the adoption of the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Bisfield. Thank you, Dr. Denny. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries 7-0. Okay, on to G1, approval of routine business by consent. Is there any item that a board member would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Go ahead, Cindy. I would move approval of routine business by consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Neiber.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Zila. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Thank you. Motion carries 7-0. That moves us down to P1, Business Services. Dr. Henson.
We need to publish the notice of hearing in relation to our budget, and so, we're required to do it by statute, but you have to vote for us to do it. And so, anyway, it's the authorization to publish a notice in regard to the 1516 budget hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Merrick.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bisfield. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Thank you. Motion carries 7-0. Okay, Q. Hold on just a second. Q1, I believe, Dr. Henson.
We have a few teachers that have submitted their resignation to us based on their circumstances, which are really out of their control. I'm recommending that we accept their resignation without imposition of the resignation penalty.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Zila.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Denny. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries 7-0. Okay, Q2.
Q2 is a very significant change to this policy. It's word policy AC, it's non-discrimination, so we're changing it to the title of the person that now exists on our organizational chart and their phone number. That's the change to it.
I would move approval of that board policy change.
Thank you, Mrs. Bisfield. Thank you, Mrs. Neiber. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries 7-0. Okay, that brings us to R1. Okay, this is where, I was not at the last meeting, but you all discussed for KASB that they, I think Mr. Stratten, you brought up the fact that they have an opportunity for us to have kind of a one-time price deal to attend their classes at $1,200. So, there was some discussion at the meeting, and so, we wanted to bring it up again to see what you all thought of it now, if we want to vote on it. So, through a little bit of a straw poll, kind of, I gave out this information of all the different workshops, and we have board members indicating that they potentially might be able to go to about nine, which would be a little bit above the break-even point of making this worthwhile. The fees for each of these is around $150, so if we went to eight, that's break-even on these registrations for the seminars. So, anyway, any board member have anything they want to, what do you think?
Seems like it would be an efficient use of funds.
Efficient use of funds?
I was just going to say, it was kind of a straw poll. I'm not sure that anyone is, like, deeply embedded into going to those workshops, so I'm not sure that it's, you know, it's actually nine workshops that would be attended through that.
Right, right. Nine that they were interested in, but not, we don't know about dates and all that kind of thing.
Correct. So, that's just throwing the opposite view there, that maybe we should just do it by workshop, rather than the season pass, as they call it.
Is there a timeframe on the pay ahead that we need to get, the amount of money?
Probably before we go to the next seminar.
I would agree to that.
In which I believe there's actually one on August 6th that, you know, and so, yeah, there's, August 6th, there is a board leadership team, one that I was thinking about attending, which is next week.
Mrs. Goodburn, I might suggest, I mean, and being devil's advocate on the other side is that it may encourage us to attend more, especially the regional meetings when they come through. I know when you did the straw poll, I didn't mark that one, so that would put us at 10, if you will. But, and I know we also have a new board member, and it is a great way, we discussed this when we talked about our membership with KASB. One of the pros of being a member is getting to meet other members of boards and administrations across the state. So, I would be, my vote will be in favor of this, to encourage us to attend more.
Okay. Yes, Mrs. Neiber?
I'll just make a motion to see how far it goes, since we've had some thought. I would move that we purchase a season pass with KASB for the coming year.
Okay, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Mr. Stratten, that was a second, so, maybe we're Stratten. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Okay, we will purchase a season pass, and we will let everyone know about the opportunities that they have too, and the dates, and so, thank you all. Okay, S, I believe, or S1, District Organization. Dr. Henson.
We have a few reports tonight that we're required to do on an annual basis, and so, the first one is in relation to the district organizational chart. You've seen it several times. It's not new to you. We're providing it to you again tonight in relation to the district organizational chart. We also have a few other reports tonight. I'm going to ask Mr. Russ Knapp if he would come to the microphone tonight. Obviously, these involve some of the budget finance aspects of the district, and the first one, Russ, we'll let you just talk about what these really mean.
Okay. This first one is the petty cash. We presented this to you in January, so this is the one that's summarizing fiscal year 1415. As you can tell, there's not a lot of activities, a lot of the buildings don't even take petty cash. It's designed, it's on an impressed basis, so they got producer receipt to get reimbursed, and it's for emergency needs, and obviously, we didn't have a lot of emergency needs. So, that's the petty cash. Any questions on that one? The next one is the Student Activities Fund. We presented this to you as well in January, so this summarizes the whole year for 1450. As you know, in January 1st, we brought the high schools on to PeopleSoft online accounting system, so we took the checkbooks out of the schools to have a little more control. So, again, so this is student activities. This would be gate receipts and club monies out at the buildings. There'd be no more district monies because all district fees will be deposited directly to our account.
So, those fees include a lot of booster clubs, lots of...
No booster clubs.
No booster clubs.
No. This would be football gate receipts, basketball, on the gate receipt part, performing arts. Then on the club accounts, there'll be fundraisers, and just mainly fundraiser for clubs. Maybe they charge some fees for the clubs, like it could be band, chess, robotics, those types of clubs out in the buildings.
Okay. They look like there's some significant balances on these. Are we kind of researching that a bit more to see if...
It's been significant for many years. We've had this discussions. Actually, elementarys and middles came down a little bit. High schools grew again, it was mainly in the gate receipt area. Clubs came down at the high schools, but the gate receipts did increase.
We're going to have a very intense conversation in the district about these fund balances. They're significant, so we will establish throughout the course of this year a fundraising policy in relation to your expenditures and your revenue and your fund balances, and so, that's something that we're going to be putting in place. ability to control those balances and those monies, and how those monies are being expended, or in some cases, not being expended. So this will be a very robust conversation internally over the next several months.
And the last one is our fund balances. If you recall, last year, we had to present this to you for the first time. It was a state statute that they passed a couple of years ago that said we'd have to do this. They've expanded and pretty much included all our funds. The only ones that is not on here is the bond and interest fund. So you can see, these are our balances. If you focus on Fund 30 Special Education, $12,763,000, that is our operating balance that we have talked about many times at our workshops. That increased $2.4 million over last year. So if you will, we surplus, we ended up surplus in 1415, our operating funds about $2.4 million. And then also, the contingency reserve stayed intact at $5.6 million. So we kind of, we've always combined those two and looked at the two of them combined as our operating balances, so it'd be about $18.4 million. All the rest of those fund balances are pretty much restricted for the self-supported funds or the capital fund, bond, and interest-type funds.
So let's pause and talk about fund balances for just a moment. I think it's safe to say that there is a lot of question about the state's fiscal picture. We are trying to prepare for reductions in our state funding throughout this fiscal year. Based on what we know at this time, we have great concern on the state's ability to fund the formula that's in place. So we're trying to prepare ourselves for, will we lose 1.5? Will we lose 5 million? What will it really look like? So we're following the state revenues on a monthly basis very, very carefully, but I want to make it very clear that as we look at our fund balances, we have a very strong belief right now that it's highly likely that we will have reductions or withholdings as this fiscal year continues, based on the state's budget picture. And so please keep that in mind, so we're trying to be very prudent, very careful. We do not want to be in a situation where all of a sudden in January, we lose a very significant amount of money, and we're trying to figure out what do we do to make ends meet during the middle of the fiscal year. So as much as possible, we're trying to prepare for this scenario that unfortunately, right now, we think is likely.
May I ask you a quick question on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Henson, any news on the court case? It was supposed to be speedy, but...
The Supreme Court, Kansas Supreme Court, has not scheduled at this point in time even a hearing date, so... So, go ahead, Mrs. Neighbor, I'm sorry.
I shared just a little bit of information with you earlier tonight. It's my understanding from people in the Capitol that the governor does not intend to cut $50 million, because he doesn't want to make that choice. So instead of 67 million in reserves, they right now are sitting at about 17.6. They cannot sustain what they are doing right now, what is left in the reserves. So when you say it's going to be very tenuous, it's going to be very tenuous every day. And they are hoping at this point that the court will make a decision so they can blame the courts instead of the legislature taking responsibility. And if that happens, we already know that there is some, there are some lines drawn in the sand between the judiciary and the legislative. So it's something that we might want to keep our eyes on.
So as you know, we have worked diligently to try to prepare for the worst-case scenario. We've made significant adjustments to our budget. You do not want to be in a position during the school year where you're considering furloughing employees, canceling programs, so we think we've prepared that we don't have to do those things. But the likelihood of us eating into fund balances is very high. I want to make sure that's really clear. Thank you.
And the last one is our monthly board financial report, but obviously, this recaps the whole fiscal year of 1415. We do this for you, this monthly report, but we also do internally monthly projections, and there was no surprises. It kind of, it turned out what we thought it would be. We actually were kind of predicting like a $1.8 million surplus, and it ended up being $2.4 million at the very end. Had some savings in some of our supplies and services lines, so that kind of reflects all in this revenue and expenditure board report. If you have any questions specifically about any, I can try to answer those.
Just reiterate what Russ said there. So you've heard some announcements over the last few weeks about other school districts, and we're not in that position. We tried to prepare for this, but we're preparing for reductions this school year and the following school year. So unless you go out and spend a whole lot of money shopping over the next few months, we are in a situation, the fiscal management of the district, not only trying to protect employees this year, but next year as well. And so, again, we're going to be very prudent with fund balances and expenditures because of what we believe to be accurate in relation to the state fiscal picture. Thank you, Russ.
Okay, T1, board comments? Everybody have any comments? No? Okay. Dr. Denny?
I move that the Board of Education recess to executive session in order to discuss matters related to employer-employee negotiations, discuss matters relating to acquisition of real property, and to discuss matters concerning security information and procedures. The meeting will reconvene at 8:15. No further business will be conducted following the executive session.
Second. Thank you, Dr. Denny, and thank you, Ms. Bisfield. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Okay, 7-0. Thank you, everyone.